We now call this meeting to order. If you could please rise and pay attention to one of our wonderful pastors in the community. As you know, Deputy Mayor Jensen was not able to be here today. There was a joke right now that they said that we're like Superman. And Clark Kent, you never see them at the same meeting. But I assure you, I am not Deputy Mayor Jensen. So my apologies, he was not able to send me the information Pastor. But if you could introduce yourself, I do know that you are from District 6?
Yes, my name is Doyle Pryor. And I'm not anybody that really needs introduction. I'm here to represent my Lord more than myself. I pastor First Southern Baptist Church here in Topeka, I'm 19th Engage. And I am blessed to get to be their pastor. Last year, they gave over $60,000 above their regular giving to local community ministries and gifts, as well as taking the second Sunday of every month to collect such things, to fill up food banks and others. We also have the largest recovery program in town that's not called Topeka Rescue Mission, called Celebrate Recovery. We work happily hand in hand with Berry and those guys down there. We also have the largest mental health group here called Christ First Counseling, which Corey Schleep does a great job leading. And also the largest university ministry called Christian Challenge to Washburn University, your fantastic university. But I'm not here tonight to be told thank you. Jesus told a story in John 17 of ten lepers. And He healed all ten, but the one that was the most unlike them and the most unlikely, fell to his knees, gave glory to God, it says in Luke 17, and said, "Thank you." Well, I'm just here tonight to be the one, this week of Thanksgiving, to say thank you. It was less than an hour ago that my son, who's a student at your university, at Washburn University, met a young lady. And an hour ago, I was with him at your lake, out of Lake Shawnee, where he got down on one knee and proposed to her and asked her to be his wife. And so I'm that one leper tonight that just come to give glory to God and not just say thank you to Him, but thank you to you for the incredible community that you support and that you also provide environments for us to do what we do. So let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you tonight, I thank you. I thank you first of all for Jesus Christ, for what He has done in my life, taking a dirty rotten person and making them brand new. I thank you Father for the congregation that you blessed me to lead. And that Father, I watch you do miracles in them every week where drug addicts go from addiction to sobriety, where we see people all the time, Father, make these incredible changes, where young college students figure out what life is about. Father, I'm just grateful to you for getting a front row seat to your mighty works. Now Father, I pray a blessing over this city council. I pray Father that they would know your goodness, and Lord, if any of them don't know Jesus, that it would be, that they would realize that it's the goodness of God that leads us to a place where we just can't help but fall to our knees and acknowledge the Creator, the one who made us, the one who redeems us, the one who came back for us and said to us, "Thank you." So Father, tonight we say thank you, I thank you. I pray Lord now that you would give them wisdom as they lead our city. I pray Father that you would bless their families as they spend time away. And I pray Father financial prosperity, as well as emotional and spiritual prosperity, as they learn to lean in hard on the Lord Jesus Christ. And it's to the one to whom we are the most thankful that we now pray these things in His name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Council.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, today we have two presentations. And before those presentations occur, since it's Thanksgiving, I do have the luck that today my two daughters and my cousin from Puerto Rico are here. So I know that they're leaving very soon. So in public, I want to tell all of you, thank you for putting up with all the travel and all the time and all the things that we give together jointly to our community. So I am thankful on this Thanksgiving, aside from this awesome team, for you guys and the support that you guys provide me. I love you. So now to business. First presentation, Public Works Quarterly Report, City Manager.
Thank you Mayor. Tonight, Public Works Director Jason P. will provide a Public Works Quarterly Report.
So continuing along with that theme of thanks, first of all, I wanted to say thanks to the council for the support they've given us in supporting our streets improvement program. I want to say thank you to the community for their vote of confidence to continue the half cent sales tax. And then lastly, I want to say thank you to my staff at Public Works that worked so hard to deliver all these great projects I'm going to show you. And just, you know, this being the kind of the third time I'm closing a construction season up here, I think it's really interesting. The good news you're going to hear tonight is we don't have any project that wasn't planned to continue into next year continuing into next year. Most of the public has noticed our streets are open, you can travel on them, we're down to that punchless work. And just to kind of hit the completed projects on this first page, you'll see 14 projects that basically are complete and open to travel. I've got a couple that still have a little bit of punchless work going on. And we have, you know, the intersection of 21st and Kansas Avenue, that was an intersection that we shut down by the summer for reconstruction and, you know, have gotten back open. I think we've seen a lot of good things. Our micro-surfacing work, which we did in central Topeka this summer, as we said, we covered about 80 miles of our preventive maintenance, so you're really starting to see the pavement management program at work. And then just kind of hitting this, we've got 21 projects that were completed this year. And, you know, this was part of what we call the rehabilitation or major repair portion. We had a number of mill and overlays that were planned and let, you know, early fall and completed in this fall cycle. And that's part of our process of, you know, metering out the work so we get good bids and don't overload contractors at the beginning and spreading it out. Things that are still what we call under construction and not completely open to traffic, Central Park Neighborhood Project, so we did that entire project, the Phase 2, that has a completion date of tomorrow. They were finishing up concrete work and some of the waterline work, but the paving work is done out there. We have the first phase associated with Wheatfield Village slated for December 1st. Good news report tonight, Southwest 29th and Burlingame Intersection, we got the signals operating out there, all those folks that couldn't make left turns, you can now make left turns out there. We do have the outside lanes still closed as we're kind of finishing up the sod and the concrete work behind that. And if you've been out on the west side of town and seen the Huntune and I-470 ramps, you've kind of had some phased openings of that with getting the ramps and the intersection at Huntune opening while we continue to work on the hill. You also see how we're trying to incorporate some of the aesthetic treatments to improve the image in our community and also thinking about plant selection and things that we can maintain with our resources there. And I think this is really shaping up to be a great project. And then, you know, as a normal part of our process, just continuing with designs, we've got a number of projects that are in design that will be under construction next year. And some of you have seen the public meetings that we're starting to have for these. You know, next week after Thanksgiving, we go to Tennessee Town to talk about the projects identified and stored, as well as we've got the North Kansas Avenue meeting to talk about the upcoming work on that. And then we're working on that kind of comprehensive mill and overlay, that major repair and rehabilitation program will be funded through the sales tax. And then just want to kind of do a picture show, some kind of before and after pictures. It's hard to believe what some of these roads look like before, but this is kind of looking at Southwest 6. So, you know, this would have been an older county road section, basically open section that we converted to a three lane road and basically got that open to traffic. It's really a great project. We replaced the waterline and our underground infrastructure as well, so that coordination of utilities and public works working hand in hand. On the, this is looking at Southeast Adams from 29th to 33rd. You know, if you just go over the hill and, you know, keep heading south, you can see what it used to look like with all those failed joints, but this is a new concrete pavement along with sidewalk. Once again, the underground infrastructure replaced as well. And then Southwest Gage, 21st to 25th, this was kind of a composite repair where we didn't remove the entire road, we kind of replaced some of the concrete panels and basically put in a new asphalt surface. We had a meeting yesterday to talk about kind of the next phase of that project coming up for next year. And just to kind of summarize where we are with the 2018 third quarter CIP, by the end of the third quarter, we had 90% of our 2018 budget basically either encumbered or expensed. So these are kind of keeping in line, you know, the projects are farther along than what this report reflects. But just, I think it's important to show to you guys that by September of this year, we had basically gotten 90% of the funds encumbered or expensed. And that's real important because you give us that money to deliver these projects and we're working aggressively to do that. So that concludes my presentation. And just once again, I'd like to say thank you for being supportive of our programs and efforts.
Dr. P, thank you very much for the amazing work that you've been doing in our community with regards to the roads and for building the trust in our community so that we could have that project passed the way that it did. So with that, any comments or questions from the council? Councilmember Ortiz?
Thank you. Jason, can you take me back to northeast Grantville neighborhood? Where is that at? Is that in Grantville?
That is north Topeka. I'm gonna...
So it's not in Grantville, right?
24 Highway.
It's north of that. I'm not sure specifically Grantville, but it is a, I can get you a map of that location.
Got it, I got it, thank you. But is it over, it's over by Reesers, is that the area? Or is it?
No ma'am, this is...
It's between Goodyear, like straight?
It is, I want to say it's...
East of that.
It's east of Goodyear, like I said, I'm just trying to get my bearings. I want to say it's west of, I'm sorry, east of Topeka Boulevard, but north of the Soldier Creek levee. It's kind of one of those neighborhoods kind of tucked up in our far northeastern city border. You know, what I was related to by streets staff, they had referred to this as the northeast Grantville neighborhood. So if we've got some misnomer there, I'll check on that and get back with you.
Yeah, because I know there's an area of Grantville that we call Grantville. Is that what we're talking about? Okay. I just want to make sure, because that's not Shawnee County, that's Jefferson, isn't it? Okay.
This is within the city of Topeka limits, but basically in that north, you know, that northern spine that goes up, it's kind of in that northeast corner.
Okay, I think I know where you're, where you're talking about. Yeah, get, send me an email with that. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Cohen.
Thank you Mayor. I just wanted to say thanks for identifying the sections of 17th Street that were still a few years out because that area wouldn't have survived a few more years. And also on 37th Street, I think that section was also scheduled to be fixed several years from now and it wasn't going to last. So it's just nice to know that we can actually identify those and get them, get them done. Thank you.
Councilman May.
Thank you Jason, thank you Mayor. I also echo the 37th Street, I'm pretty happy about that one. Just in general, I have a real quick question. Are the budgets, are the bids for these projects coming in, would you say that based on our projections in the CIP, are they typically spot on, are they under budget, over budget?
This year, we've seen, we saw some pretty aggressive budgeting early on. I think, you know, if you go back to, so just to give you one example, if we look at this budget encumbrance and specifically that countywide, that 275,000 that's unencumbered, we had very aggressive bids on the crack ceiling and micro-surfacing, so that came in under our estimates. I'd say some of those earlier projects, we definitely saw under engineers' estimates. There were a couple late season that were right on, and I think we had a couple that were over. But I'd say overall, probably under our initial estimates, we've seen good pricing.
Good to hear, thank you.
You have an additional comment, Councilmember?
I did. Jason, also from Gage to Fairlon, we put in a sidewalk, correct? I thought I seen that up there. And I just wanted to know, because it didn't have a sidewalk before on 6th Street, on 6th Street?
Southwest 6 between Gage and Fairlon, that was a countywide project. And so we work hand in hand while planning to make those kind of complete streets. So that included, we also worked with Shawnee County on putting a portion of the multi-use pathway as well as sidewalks along that to make sure we're serving all those mobility needs.
So where did the money come from?
So that was identified in the countywide half cent sales tax project. And, you know, if you recall, that funding basically says, "We want you to work on, on this road," but it does allow us to pay for sidewalks, curbing gutter, utilities, everything needed to kind of reconstruct those projects within the countywide.
And I appreciate that explanation because, you know, my constituents say, "Well, but, you know, we passed the half cent sales tax and it says existings, but it didn't have existing sidewalks and now it does." I think it looks good and I think it looks great, but I think we need to remember that when we're doing all the streets. That's, that's why I was hoping we could get that changed. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you Mayor. I too would like to thank you for the progress. And also, I think I've said this in one of our public hearings, but not here, adding the micro-surfacing, which covered so many miles at this juncture. We've all been involved in explaining that, I think, because it was done on newer streets. But I, not only did people respond incredibly well to it, they were kind of relieved to see a volume of streets and to see it in all parts of town, but also for all of us, to me, I see it, you might have used a term just now, but kind of working both ends against the middle, that we're preserving the streets that we've worked on while we continue bringing up the rear, if you will. And I, I just appreciate that so much and I think I can speak for constituents broadly. A question about the new one, and someone just brought that up. We have talked for a while about the problems that we've all had stumbling over which half cent sales tax we're talking about. And when it was time to campaign for the new, the extension of our citywide half cent sales tax, we talked about giving it a name this time. And I, I guess Fix Our Streets was what got used in the campaign. Are we going to continue that and call that the Fix Our Streets money?
That would be my preference. I think that makes it easier to call it the Fix Our Streets, because I can tell you that is the feedback we heard, talking countywide or citywide really seems to be hard to explain.
It is. Well, thank you for confirming that. If we can all kind of, if that's the case, I'm with it. I'm happy to get on board with it. I just, we just all need to know. Thank you so much, thank you.
Additional comments, questions? All right, thank you very much, Dr. P. We appreciate the report that you just provided.
You're welcome.
We now move on to another report, utilities report, City Manager.
Thank you Mayor. Tonight, Deputy Director Braxton Copley will present the quarterly report for the Utilities Department. Braxton.
We can start singing the Jeopardy song.
Technology is great. Good evening, Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to visit with you about some more of our exciting projects in the utilities. We have a couple of significant waterline projects under construction, the 29th Street project that I highlighted last week from Golden all the way over to Croco, that's in advance of the county, countywide half cent sales tax funded major street project that's going to commence next year. Contractor now has three crews on that, we're making some significant progress. The substantial completion date that he's been given is the end of the year. And hopefully we'll race to be able to, to do that. California tower coating, those of you who've driven past the California Tower notice that it's less than stellar looking. We have coated the inside of the tower. Next week, we're going to be disinfecting that and doing our back T test and we'll be putting that back into service. However, with the tremendous amount of work that was required to remove all of that old paint off of the tower, and then we did have some of that lead based paint primer underneath there that had to be abated, coupled with a abysmally cold fall and early weather, we lost our opportunity to coat that. The coating's pretty temperamental in terms of the temperature, so it will be next spring, but we're looking at May to bring the contractor back and we're going to bag that tower and, and coat it. So we will have it back in service for the, for the winter and the exterior coating will be next, next year. We have a, this is a five part project that is going to provide a major transmission main, a 24 inch transmission main, basically from Topeka Boulevard all the way through Oakland over to the Norwood Pump Station, and then from there it allows us to feed the southeast zone. And the crane projects, I call them the crane east and west projects, are in construction right now. The west phase is just getting started. That's about 4,000 lineal feet of 24 inch DIP and another 1,600 lineal feet of PVC, which will allow us to abandon an 18 inch line that goes right underneath Hallmark. So we've got that one going. The east phase of it, which basically goes from Jefferson all the way over to Branner, we just this week got our last 300 feet of pipe, passed the back T and pressure test. So we're going to be cutting over services between the next few weeks, we will have that portion of it done. In design, we have the, the last phase of that project, which is the straight and sewer down the Norwood alignment to serve the Norwood Pump Station, Indian Hills project in design. And look down at the bottom, we have disinfection modifications. I'm happy to say for the last two quarters, we have been well within our regulatory limits on our halocytic acids, as well as our trihalomethanes. The disinfection modification will include the addition of powdered activated carbon, which will help us to ensure continued compliance on HAA's and halocytic acids and trihalomethanes. Additionally, will give us the ability to combat taste and odor issues. It's probably been more than 20 years since we jettisoned the old PAC system that wasn't operational. So we're very much looking forward to having that on hand when we get one of those taste and odor episodes to be able to, you know, give us a tool to help combat that. Wastewater projects in construction, the wastewater lining project that I featured last time, contractor has pretty much completed all of the television work that we require them to do to document the condition of the pipes prior to doing the lining. We're probably about 15% on the actual lining and spot repairs. But the project is definitely going along well and we've added about four or five other locations for spot repairs that they found when they did their televising work. So Oakland wastewater treatment plant, we are just right now finishing up the contracts to get about five and a half million dollars of equipment on order. And this will be for the cleaning and condensing of the gas as part of that. These are long, long lead items for that, for the gas portion of it. North Tyler Pump Station, you, you guys will remember this one, it came in front of you as a CUP, conditional use permit. This is up in north Topeka, the big brown building in the upper left-hand corner, that's the North Topeka YMCA, just to kind of help get where we are. The picture on the right that says wet well, this, I just want to take a second and talk about that. This is a six foot diameter, 30 foot deep wet well. If you look inside that reinforced concrete pipe, you see that bright white lining on there. Well, it's not really a lining. This is, this is the sort of cool technology that I love. This is, it's called ConShield and it's actually an add mixture. It's a mixture that they add to the concrete before pouring the pipe. And it's antibacterial. It's because bacteria and hydrogen sulfide gas, those combine to make sulfuric acid, which eats away the concrete. So by adding this to the pipe, the old systems, they would use like a laminate, but, you know, you'd get a hole in it, you'd get a tear, then the bacteria would get behind that, would go ahead and combine to create the sulfuric acid to eat that away. This is actually in the concrete. So if it gets scratched, it's just exposing another layer of that antibacterial material. In design, a couple of big force mains that we've talked about, Ash Street, Wanamaker, East Side Interceptor, and then our UV treatment plant modifications. And on the stormwater side, the contractor is moving well on the flood wall improvements. He finished the underseepage berm in north Topeka. He's got about 40 of the caissons in place now along the flood wall. Took care of the abatement of the creosote soil that we ran into. And we did get from the UP the signed ready entry that will allow us to at least get started on that underseepage berm along the South Topeka levee unit. So we're moving on that, still working on some of the details with the railroad, always on the maintenance agreements and the permanent easement, but at least we're going to get going and be able to get the contractor mobilized and take advantage of his option. And then Fairlon, those of you who've traveled on Fairlon Road have noticed that we've taken over one of the lanes for the last several months. And that's because we had some subsidence of the pavement. And basically to put you into, and to orient you, 25th Street South going down towards the fire station, that inside northbound lane is the one that we've had closed off. If you look on the left-hand side, you can see what the actual issue is. This is corrugated metal pipe. And if you look at the bottom of that, you see puddles of water, you see the pipe completely delaminated, you see the soil in there. What the picture unfortunately is not showing is the even bigger issue, which is the CMP should be perfectly round, but we're starting to lose the haunch. So it's basically starting to collapse, that's what's caused subsidence of the pavement. Initially, we thought that centrifugally cast concrete would be the most cost effective way to do it, but we did go ahead and alt bid, open trench replacement. And a local contractor basically surprised us all, came in, lower cost to do the entire open trench replacement of this section of pipe than we were going to get from a specialty contractor out of town for doing this centrifugally cast concrete. Our, we had this on a fast track since we realized this, we're looking at end of November to get started. And then, weather willing and the good Lord helping us, we're trying to knock it out by the end of January to get this done. So that's the Fairlon emergency storm pipe replacement. The total that we have, Dr. P. had showed you a slide of basically one year, his 2018 projects. To give you a more realistic picture of where we are, I've included everything that's open, whether it's, you know, a project from 2014, a lining project that we're getting closed out, or it's a project that's in design that was in the 2019, they're all included in here. The city manager had asked that I provide a little more detail. And so in terms of planning or design, including projects that we've had to push out to avoid a downgrade of our utility revenue bond ratings, we're at 136 million. And then what we actually have in construction, we're really closer to about 35 million. So with that, I will gladly stand for any questions on any of our utilities projects.
Thank you very much. Councilman May.
Thank you Mayor. Braxton, a couple of questions. On one of your slides, you mentioned the Oakland wastewater treatment plant and the biogas. The League of Municipalities Conference, there was another municipality that received recognition for their biogas. Basically, they capture it and resell it for a profit. Is that something that we're doing here or exploring if we're not already doing it?
No, that, that is exactly what we hope to take advantage of with the project that we have. No, that is exactly what we hope to take advantage of with the project that we have. I'll say it's technically, it's in design because we haven't awarded a contract to the actual contractor, but we have made the purchases of those long lead items. And so basically, there's two components of it. One is the solids handling, which basically are the centrifuges to make us much more efficient on the solids handling. The other is to capture that methane gas that's a byproduct of our digestives. And right now, we're flaring that. So basically, it's not being put to beneficial use. And the project is intended to maximize the amount of biogas that we can generate, capture that, clean it, compress it, transport it. We've been in negotiations with Southern Star, which is a gas wholesale transport line. They're amenable to take this product from us. And then the idea is to, A, put beneficial reuse to it, and then also to generate revenue to offset the cost, because it is a substantial cost. Its estimate was $22 million total for both components, solids handling as well as the biogas.
Thank you. Can I ask a little more?
Yes, sir.
On the Fairlon project, relatively ambitious to do it in the middle of winter. But my question on that is, when you trench that out and replace it, is it replaced with a better material that won't decompose in the way that the previous materials had?
Yes, thank you. Excellent question. We are going to be going back with a reinforced concrete pipe as opposed to a corrugated metal pipe. And in the lessons learned category, I have a lot of corrugated metal pipe that's 20, 25 years old, that's in equal or even more deplorable condition than that. It's really more heavy clay corrosive soil where that moisture is going to be trapped in. Corrugated metal would not be my first choice in terms of what we put in there. The current standard is underpavement reinforced concrete pipe, and that's reflected in our technical specifications. When we get into private development outside of the right-of-way, then that would allow for a HDPE, high-density polyurethane, polyethylene pipe, which again has a estimated useful life of 100 years on it. I've been able to incorporate that in some of my stormwater projects that are outside of the right-of-way.
Thank you.
So great question. Thank you.
Additional questions for Braxton? Seeing none, thank you very much for your report. We now move on to the roll call.
Councilmember Hiller?
Here.
Clear. Ortiz?
Here.
Emerson?
Here.
Padilla?
Here.
Jensen? Mays?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Mayor DeLeese?
Here.
We move on to the consent agenda. If the clerk would read?
A is Nornance, introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, allowing and approving city expenditures for the period September 29, 2018 through November 2, 2018, and enumerating said expenditures therein via minutes of the regular meeting of November 13, 2018, and there are no applications this evening.
We have heard the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the body? We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Lester. We have a second by Councilmember Emerson. If there's no questions or comments, we proceed with voting.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to action items. Item A, if the clerk would read.
A is a resolution introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, authorizing initiation of condemnation proceedings to acquire temporary and permanent easements for the Arbonia and Winding Road Project Number T-7010, 14, Phase 1.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. We have reached out again to the agent for the company but have not received a response. So we asked City Council to approve this resolution in order for us to move forward. Staff is available to answer any questions if there are any from the governing body.
We don't have anybody's handoff for public comment on this. Is there any comments or questions or the pleasure of the body? We have a motion for approval by Councilman Emerson. We have a second by Councilman Lesser. Then we have additional comments. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you. City Manager, how much more of this do we need? I thought we had...
On this particular project, it outlines in the map that's there, the portion that we need in order to move forward from there. So we've had a couple of different, are you referring to this particular project or we've had a number of other projects? I think, I just want to clarify your question. We've had, we discussed this one...
Maybe I'm thinking of Arbonia and Huntown. Maybe that's what I'm thinking of.
Yes. It relates to that particular project, but this would complete the area that we need to acquire. So...
Is that more to the west then?
It's closer to the Sam's store itself.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Are we, I'm sorry, I didn't look at this. Are we going, or is it going to be larger when we pull into it or?
It'll come out over to here. It winds over here to meet up with the road left. So we're moving this over to here.
Oh, okay.
That's what we're doing.
Okay. So we're acquiring that from Samson? Is that what we're, okay. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Seeing none, we proceed with voting.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item five, non-action items. Item A, if the clerk would read.
A is discussion regarding report documentation of liquid waste hauling.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Utilities Director Bob Sample will provide information along with regarding the liquid waste hauling request. Excuse me. Plan.
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, City Manager. So before you tonight, up for discussion and consideration is some minor language changes to our fats, oil, and grease ordinance, which in utilities, we most affectionately refer to as our FOG program. So the purpose is to really just align our ordinance with our current practices, which is going paperless with our program. And we've reached out to all of our stakeholders and communicated with them, and we've had no negative feedback. And there are some benefits to a paperless program like this. Number one, it's a cost savings to the stakeholder, it's a cost savings to the city of Topeka, and it's also more sustainable. So what I'd like to do is just take a little bit of time here and give you a bit of an overview of the FOG program, kind of keeping in with the theme of my overviews of the many different parts to utilities. And so I'd like to introduce Amy Bloom from our Water Pollution Control Division. And she's been managing this project for over 18 years. And we've got three or four slides we'd like to go through with you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, and City Manager. Thank you for the opportunity to present an overview of the FOG program. And I will go through this pretty swiftly, so I will stand for questions afterwards. Okay, so as Bob mentioned, we're talking about two minor changes to the ordinance. And basically, it's about changing user fee provisions. And that is not, not the, not adjusting fees or changing fees, just the language in the ordinance to be in line with the rest of the articles in the utilities ordinances. These two, these three sections, article sections, have not been changed and adjusted for that language change in relation to user fees. And then also, the big one is the paperless reporting formats, changing those, changing the language in the ordinance to adjust to current practices. The FOG program has actually been paperless for almost two years, and it is going very, very well. Last month, we changed over the septic hauler program to paperless about a month ago. And so it was just about changing the ordinance to reflect current practice. And so the three articles affected are there, shown on the slide, and the specific code sections, municipal code sections that are there on the slide as well. So here's a very brief who, what, and why. So who does it affect? Obviously, the community stakeholders. The FOG program and the septic tank hauler program are made up of users, stakeholders, community stakeholders, grease haulers, septic haulers, what we call, refer to in the ordinance as grease generators. We have over 26 licensed haulers for the city of Topeka, but we also have 350-plus grease generators. And when I say generators, I mean any, basically, any facility within the city of Topeka that serves a meal or serves or prepares a meal. That's anywhere from grocery stores, hotels, elder care facilities, things, places you wouldn't think. But if they prepare a meal on site, then they have a grease trap, then they are a generator, and they have to be in compliance with city code. What impact does it have on, as Bob expanded, it's going to, it's all about efficiencies on their side as well as on the city's side. They no longer have to provide a hard copy form. They no longer have to stuff it in a envelope and slap a stamp on it. It's a matter of going online, and I'll have a snapshot of the electronic forms. But it's a matter of just going online, filling out the information, and then click and submit, and it comes directly to us. Why are these changes necessary? Obviously, to align with the current practices and also to help us be in line with our vision, our goals as a unit and as a department. I have a unit, administration unit, within the Water Pollution Control, but then also as a whole, the Department of Utilities about sustainability, limiting the use of our natural resources. So going paperless does all of that in a really great way. So here is a snapshot on the last year. See an example of our grease inspection report. That is basically a report that every single hauler must fill out and submit every time they go out and service or pump a grease trap or grease interceptor. On the bottom right there, you'll see this is actually a snapshot of the city's webpage. There's the user, stakeholder only has to use two clicks to actually get to that location. So it's very convenient. And the link there, I've communicated to all of the stakeholders. I pretty much am trying to compile a list of emails of all the restaurants. And actually, the form you'll see at the very bottom, on all of the forms that we have a paperless, if they put in an email address, they actually can receive a copy, electronically copy as well. So that helps me also start accumulating those emails. So it makes it much easier to communicate rather than having to send out letters. And again, that's in line with our goals of trying to conserve natural resources. So this is all about gaining efficiencies. Obviously, the thing, it will abolish use of duplication of data. Hard copy forms would come in. I would then take that hard copy, put that into an electronic spreadsheet, Excel. I would use that for billing purposes and to manipulate that data for, using it for analysis. That all comes in electronically now, so there's no more duplication. Printing costs are eliminated. We were having to provide NCR forms to all of the haulers for their use. So that's completely eliminated. And also, a big one for me is using handling and storing paper. So after 27, almost a 27-year career, you can imagine the amount of paper I've had accumulated in my office. So, and some deliverables. This is actually one of the biggest things for me is it has provided real-time reporting by stakeholders. Before with the paper forms, it would be sometimes weeks, days or weeks, or even every quarter before I would get updates as to what's really happening in the field through these reports. So I'm finding now with the transition for paperless, I'm sitting, I'm getting these reports almost daily and weekly. And so that helps me prepare the program and get a really good idea of what's happening in the field. And that provides me with a program, up-to-date program activity. I then can turn that into being more proactive in terms of planning and seeing where our problems areas are. If there's some facilities that are not getting serviced on a routine basis, I can then use that to strategically plan for being more proactive rather than reactive. And I have a slide on my next one, so I hope it doesn't, everybody's eaten, right? They've had their dinner? So this is what happens when we have, when we have situations where we don't plan proactively. This is at an undisclosed location. This is actually a 1,000-gallon grease interceptor that overflowed. That facility obviously did not maintain a service pumping schedule as required by city code. So this is the kind of thing we want to prevent. And so by being paperless, it has allowed us to be a lot more proactive in planning those, to prevent those kind of things from happening. And with that, I will stand for your questions.
Well, first, I want to say thank you for presenting to us. It's wonderful to see a new face and for you to be able to bring in new leadership to come and speak to us. Thank you for being a great leader in that regard. And I think that as our constituents are looking from home, this is just one of those things that your city does, that when our city is operating correctly, you never even think of fats not being in your water system. And, and it's just, again, the unsung heroes that make sure that we have the things that we need without having any concern of things like this. So thank you for what you do for our city.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Councilwoman Emerson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say, Mrs. Bloom, this is fantastic. And Mr. City Manager, I'd love to see every week us have an item where some city department has, has just introduced something to make us cheaper, more efficient, and quicker. So I would, I love that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to follow up with that. I hope if you haven't advised the Sustainability Advisory Board of this development that you do. This is the kind of thing that, that 10 years ago, when I first came on the council, the Sustainability Board had taken the lead in getting recommendations, report and recommendations from Vermont Energy, I want to say it was, that we could do this kind of thing in every department. I'm guessing from what you said that you decided to ease your way into it and make, get everybody on board and take that two years, because that's 400 folks, many of whom may not have been on the computer at first, right?
Right. And there still is provision for hard copy for those small mom-and-pop places. I still get requests occasionally for, can you send me a hard copy form? And for those that just aren't tech savvy. And so we do, we are accommodating. They are our customers, so.
I appreciate hearing that as well, but you've made it easy. I mean, the fact that you thought it through, that it just took two clicks to get in, and the form looks, looks simple. I just thank you, and I agree with Councilwoman Emerson as well. If we could get one of these a week, success stories, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, seeing none, thank you very much for the presentation.
Again, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
Seems that there's no more. Bob, do you have anything else that you would like to add?
I've just was getting my papers. But I would like to just express thank you to council and to our community for allowing us to serve. And that's really what it's all about. So thank you for everything.
There is no other items on the agenda, so therefore, we now proceed with the announcements. The clerk is not going to give any because we don't have meetings for a while. So, City Manager?
I'll cover briefly, though, some of the things that we have on the calendar for December 5th, since, or December 4th, excuse me. December 4th, we're looking at having a presentation on our snow and ice removal plan. Discussion items will be discussion of the TMTA charter ordinance change, the downtown bid ordinance, the Topeka T-Bid ordinance. Action items, we'll be looking at the traffic pedestrian safety ordinance update, the camping ordinance update, and potentially the joint committee update if it meets. 2018 budget hearing, the Aquarian Acres special assessments public hearing and resolution, and then the liquid waste handling ordinance that we just, we had a presentation on. And then also, I think that's, yeah, that's everything that we're looking at for sure. The other, only other item I have, excuse me, Mayor, is the coffee on your corner session for tomorrow was canceled.
Okay. Well, I'm going to take just a little bit. You didn't have me last week, so I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Big Mike. I'm so sorry. He's throwing things in his corner. First of all, the same way that I thank my daughters, I want to thank the staff here. The work that we've been able to do in the last 12 months as a team has been phenomenal. The council that came on board has been a delight to work with, and it just shows how we can all maybe defer on our opinions, but that we can still work together. So you want to talk about a mayor having something to be thankful for. It's wonderful to have meetings in which we do business, and we don't have to worry about other things. So I'm very thankful for all of you. I want to thank the deputy mayor because... I want to thank the deputy mayor, because Deputy Mayor Jensen, I don't think he knew what it meant to be the deputy mayor the first year that I got elected. He has run more meetings than I think that any other deputy mayor has in the past, but not by reason of illness, because I know that we've had mayors that have had to be, you know, out for a while because of illness. And a lot of this has been because when I embarked in this journey, I did so with the intent that Topeka was going to be known nationwide and hopefully globally. And that has meant that I've had to travel a lot. And with traveling and doing things outside of our community for our community, it's meant that you've seen him sitting in this seat several times, and he has always been very graceful at doing so, so I want to thank him for that. I want to thank the Bloomberg Harvard people that have taken an interest in the city of Topeka and have invested so much into our community. There's already a group working with City Manager to address light. There's training that's happening. We lost Nikki Lee, however, Jason Peak is part of the program as well. And there's a lot more good things that are happening in your city, thanks, you know, to Bloomberg and to the folks at Harvard that are contributing to our growth and our success. You have no idea how many people from the outside are looking at all of us right now and being very impressed with everything that's happening in the city. I also want to say thank you to the Mayor's Smart Cities Institute. Again, because of the work that Sherry Shunover has undertaken in making sure that we are a smart city and that we're doing technology, Topeka was yet again selected for, for us to go and talk about how do we become a smart city? And in only Sherry Shunover's genius could we come up with a project that is blockchain. I don't know if many of you have heard about what blockchain is, but it's a way in the internet to categorize data points, so that then you could pull those data points together because you've been able to identify them. It's very technologically savvy stuff, but if we're going to really look at our data and marry the data that's in arcane databases, that's what we need to do, and it doesn't just work for us, but it works for other cities. And the city of Topeka is going to be represented in December, so again, I'm going to be out. But thanks to Sherry for that great idea, but that just comes to show the caliber of people that we have in our city. I want to say thank you for the volunteer group that does the M4T, which is the Community Organizing Group for the Mayor. As you all know, as mayor, I only have one staff person, and in order for me to be able to engage in the community in a meaningful way, I have an army of people that are very active, working in the community on a regular basis, on a volunteer basis, that just gives up their time. And we door knock, we talk to neighborhoods, we go, we prepare barbecues, we just sit with people, and we engage our community, especially in sectors that are regularly visited by a mayor. And that is something that I take great pride on, that it's not just about engaging with the business sector, but it's engaging with everybody else. And I can't do that without Nicole Ryan, Jennifer Getz, Mickey Bercher, and the list just goes on and on of people that I get to work with, so thank you all for that. I also want to say thank you to the Mayor's Institute on City Design Group that allowed me to be there last week in Miami. For those of you that don't know where your mayor was at, we were selected for a great program to engage with seven other mayors across the nation to talk about one specific project of our choosing. And one of the things that I've been trying to do is not reinvent the wheel by bringing, you know, cute things that the mayor wants to do, but by highlighting the things that our community already has been diligently working on. And one of those things is the riverfront. And for years, our community has talked about the river, dreamt about the river. And in that process, when we hit a really big economic downturn, we stopped talking about the river and investing in the river. However, we were sage stewards of our funds, we were able to help get that we're going, and part of that process meant that when there was an opportunity to talk about what's the next thing in Topeka, if we can redevelop and work on so that we can have a quality of place, it's the riverfront. So we were able to go to Miami and talk with top nationwide consultants that now for the next year are going to be working with us as we have questions on how to move forward. I came with a bag of ideas that I'm just going to unload on the riverfront, and the most important thing is that the city understand that we're going to have resources, that we would have to pay hundreds of thousands of dollars that are now free to us for a year on this project, just picking up the phone and saying, what do we do next? And they're there for us. And then finally, I am very thankful for my village. When I undertook this role as a mayor, a lot of people were trying to figure out how I was going to do the being a single mom and be a mayor and have a full-time job, and make no mistake, this is a full-time job. Actually, this is much more than a full-time job, and I also have a full-time job that I do work a full-time job at. A lot of times, I have two phones on me on a regular basis, and I'm constantly working late into the night and very early into the morning, but I do it with joy. And the only reason that I can do that is because I have a village of people that help me with my kids and help me be the best that I can be for my community. I thank my kids because they are absolutely my biggest encouragers to keep on doing the work that I do in the city. And I have no family in Topeka, so my family is the people that have surrounded me and my kids. And you all know who you are, so for that, I say thank you. And I'm very thankful to serve all of you, because this city is absolutely phenomenal. And I hope that someday, every single citizen in this community gets to see yourself through the eyes of love that I see you, and that many people across the nation are seeing you now. I'm thankful for all of you. Councilman Mays.
Thank you, Mayor. Tough act to follow there. I will say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I hope everybody drives safely if they're traveling and has a, has a great meal with their family and gets to enjoy everything. I wanted to touch on an event that happened in District 7 this week. Councilman Padilla was there with me, but we broke ground on the new St. Jude Dream Home. This is, we did such a good job last year that they decided to come back again. So last year, we sold 6,500 tickets. Over 5,000 people toured the home throughout the time that it was open, and they sold out of the tickets 30 days early. So this year, they've decided to make 7,500 tickets available, so an additional 1,000 tickets. It's expected to raise, if we sell them all, $750,000 for cancer treatment for children. Big shout-out to all of the contractors that are working on that for free. Mark Bowling Construction is the general contractor on this. They're building a house that's estimated to be around $500,000. It's going to be in the Lawrence Bay area. The city, we hope, will be cooperating with that to make it a little bit easier for them. And that's something that, as I understand it, will be coming before us, before too long. But it's exciting, where it just shows the generosity of our community, that we're willing to, to work hard and share our time and our talents and our treasures to, to help families that are in a really bad spot. So I'm thankful for, for the generosity of our community. Thank you very much.
Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. About this time of year, I tell you that here comes Santa Claus over to the Barillon Plaza Mall. Santa will be here Friday, November 23rd, from 10 to 4:00. The flyer had something unique this time. It said, "Bring your own camera and capture that special moment when your little ones let Santa in, let Santa in on their Christmas list." So bring your cellphones, and I think that's kind of a nice change in this, this new way that we live now, so, this digital age. Thank you.
Councilman Lester.
Thank you. Two, two quick things. Just wanted to thank the community for their support of the Casa Home for the Holidays and Patron Party last week. It was a, a successful event and surpassed the fundraising they've done in the past. Also want then to also say, tell people not to forget that Shelter Living SLI's Festival of Trees is coming up next week, so another great organization that really helped benefit our community. So if you have the opportunity, get out and go check the trees out, and happy Thanksgiving.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you. I want to comment again this year. I have to loop around to come park when I come to these meetings, and I really like the new decorations that we have for City Hall. I think they're, they're really classy, they're a little unusual, and I like them a lot. So kudos to whoever came up with that arrangement. Other than that, I will add to, but not duplicate, some of these current event referrals. Miracle on Kansas Avenue will be this weekend. It is always a good time with the parade and the shopping and, and so on. In Santa Claus, we've got the Winter Wonderland going on down at the lake. And I am, right now, planning to try and hit all three Nutcrackers again. I love the Nutcracker, but the Chocolate Nutcracker will be this weekend with, I It Takes a Village, and that is a wonderful show, and then both Kansas Ballet and Midwest Ballet in the middle of December, so tickets are available now or at the door. Other than that, happy Thanksgiving to everyone as well. Be safe, and to echo other comments earlier, thank you, thank you all from the council, from the staff, and the community. Community has been so great, and it's been fun to build those communications and successes. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. I would like to remind everyone, buddy, that the Thanksgiving, annual Thanksgiving Dinner is at the Expo Center, and if you have not served in that capacity, it's really a blessing, so come out and serve. It's awesome to see all the people in Topeka get together, not just the low to moderate income, but the working poor, because it's just awesome. I would also like to thank the mayor for being back, and Deputy Mayor for doing such a fine job, and maybe we won't get out of here about 7:30 tonight.
I'm grateful for that.
Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to do, shout out congratulations for two, well, one group and one person. Shawnee Heights High School once again won the state 5A cheerleading championship. This is the second year that's, that's been a statewide sport, a competitive sport, and then won it now two years in a row. And it's, my daughter was on it last year, so I got the opportunity to go to it, I guess is how I should say it. And it was really, it was fantastic. So congratulations to Shawnee Heights. And secondly, to congratulate a former constituent, Chad Gray. Chad recently graduated from Air Force pilot training, and as Alta Pekins, he was in the top of his class. So that means the way it works in pilot training, the first guy gets the choice of any aircraft that are available. So he got his choice, and he chose the A-10 Warthog, the close air support, so congratulations, Chad, nice job.
Councilmember Padilla.
I want to echo what some of my council members have said in thanking people for all their support that I know I've received during this first year on the governing body. I want to thank the city crews that I see daily out in this cold weather, especially 29th and McVicker. They were out there repairing that, that water main break, and it couldn't have been fun, but that was a lot of work, and they, they've been really working hard to repair that, and I appreciate what they do. And broader than that, I appreciate all the work that our city employees do. We'll all be enjoying Thanksgiving in one way or another, and there's a group of people, firefighters, policemen, first responders, hospital personnel, a lot of people that will still be working to help give those things to the citizens that we need and count on them for. So let's not take them for granted and make sure that we include them in our thanks during the holiday. And I want to welcome a new member to the downtown, and that's the Iron Rail Brewing Company. I had the opportunity to go there and enjoy it, and so Councilman Mays there, and he was taking advantage of that opportunity as well. So, again, enjoy the holidays, be safe, and thank you to all the community volunteers that, as Councilwoman Ortiz said, who spend all their time at the community dinner, the people who donate to that effort, and all the people who serve in their own capacity in some leadership role that helps us and the city get a bearing on what we can do to help them. So thank you very much.
There is no one signed up for public comment tonight, therefore, at this point, we cannot adjourn the meeting because we do have two executive sessions this evening. If the city attorney could please read the parameters.
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of time not to exceed 30 minutes for consultation with the city's legal counsel to discuss attorney-client privilege matters related to contract negotiations as justified by KSA 75-4319B2. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present: members of the governing body, City Manager Brent Trout, Deputy City Manager Doug Gerber, interim administrative and financial services director Nick Hawkins, human resources director Jackie Russell, senior assistant city attorney Katherine Walter, outside counsel Amanda Bogelsberg, and myself. No action is anticipated to be taken when the open meeting resumes.
We have heard the parameters. What is the pleasure of the body? We have a motion by Councilmember Emerson, or second by Councilmember Cohen. All those in favor, actually, please vote.
We have eight, yes?
Eight having voted yes, the motion passes. We will have a five-minute recess, we'll allow the room to vacate, and then we will reengage into our executive session. We have ended, we are in need of resuming again the same executive session for a period not to exceed 30 minutes. Do I have a motion in the body to reengage? Councilwoman Hiller makes that motion. Councilwoman Ortiz seconds the motion to reengage into executive session. All in favor, raise your right hand. We are now going to resume into executive session not to exceed 30 minutes. No action was taken in the prior session, and there is no action expected on this next We are in need of reengaging in the executive session. No action was taken in the previous discussion. At this point, we need a motion and a, and a vote to reengage for an additional 30 minutes. I have a motion by Councilmember Emerson, I have a second by Councilmember Padilla. All those in favor of reengaging for no more than 30 minutes, raise your right hand. Okay, so we now recess again into executive session. We have adjourned the first executive session. No action has been taken.
Yes.
At this point in time, we do need to reengage in a second executive session. If the city attorney could please read the parameters.
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of time not to exceed 10 minutes to discuss confidential employment matters pertaining to non-elected personnel as justified by KSA 75-4319B1, in order to protect the privacy of those discussed. Today, the discussion, the following individuals should be present: members of the governing body and human resources director Jackie Russell. No action is anticipated to be taken when the open meeting resumes.
You have heard the parameters. What is the pleasure of the body? We have a motion by Councilmember Emerson, a second by Councilmember Lester. At this point in time, we raise our hand to say, "Lily, yes." All having voted yes, we recess into executive session not to exceed 15 minutes?
10.
10 minutes.
10, for sure. Won't be an hour and a half.
Won't be an hour and a half.
We have concluded our executive session. No action has been taken. At this point in time, the meeting is over and we're adjourned.